All right. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the county, Atchison County Commission Meeting for Monday, January eighth. I'd like to call the meeting to order and if you please stand and join Mr. Formos for invitation. Welcome.
Good morning to each one of you. On this day of organization for the coming year, I want to remind you of one verse in the Book of Psalms. An event in King Solomon's life, the one verse is from Psalm one twenty-seven, verse one. Which reads, unless the Lord builds a house, those who build it labor in vain. Unless the Lord watches over the city, the watchman stays awake in vain. After Solomon had been appointed or anointed king of Israel and his father David had died. Then Solomon set about organizing his camp gym. And the Lord God spoke to Solomon and said, Ask what I shall give you. Solomon's response was, Give me now wisdom and knowledge to go out and come in before this people, for who can govern this people of yours, which is so great. We keep these in mind, let's pray. Father, thank you for creating order so that our affairs may be organized. I ask you to guide these commissioners in two thousand and twenty-four, that your hand will be in what is done and built. May you give them wisdom to govern. Let today be a good beginning to this year. May they plan well their own structure and deal wisely with personnel and insurance matters. May their decisions encourage peace and prosperity in our county. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Please show me the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Well, so here. I didn't even notice that until now. I didn't tell I should have.
Public comment? Seeing none approval of the minutes, we have a motion to approve the minutes from January second, two thousand and twenty-four.
So move. Say it.
Okay, then move to second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Noel.
Have anything this time? Let me just, with the weather this coming up this week, be very careful. Please give our county staff and township staff time and space to get the roads cleared and be careful of passing and, and this could be a serious storm.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Other than that, I know J-Cab meeting this afternoon has been delayed due to the storm. Lots of way on a response from Department of Corrections. Would not heard back yet. So here's something today or tomorrow.
Okay.
So for two reasons, we've just decided to reschedule. And then also heard a few positive comments regarding the work on the roads last Friday, Saturday. So anyway, so good job.
Yeah, I echo that. Good comments are always feel good. So it's nice that the guys and gals that are out there clearing them off, that they get appreciated. Um, okay, new business. I have a couple items to add to the agenda. Um, I have a purchase order from the appraiser. For, uh, this is going against the ARPA courthouse renovation, uh, funding. In the amount of thirty thousand. The, this is going to replace, um, old electrical lines, um, carpet, all iron for the wall support. Plaster walls, interior paint, installation of ceiling units. And Casey Coring to, uh, join their separated offices. They have a motion to approve.
It's made out of.
The ARPA courthouse renovation line.
So move. Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. And just a little bit about that is that was the previous appraiser had started that project. Um, so we're just kind of seeing it through one thing at a time. Um, I also have a purchase word, thank you. From Roden Bridge. That is for the two thousand and twenty-four fuel, um, for EMS Roden Bridge and solid waste. Um, this is to consumer oil and propane, uh, in the amount of one hundred forty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. And one cent. Do you have a motion to approve?
So move, say it.
Okay, it's been moved in, seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is three to zero. Thank you. Any other new business? We're about ten minutes ahead of schedule. Jim, the group's gonna throw you this this morning.
Well, ready. Can I get a, a digital copy of our handbook? You gonna send it to me?
Yep.
Mr. Cardman, thank you.
The current one that you guys have not approved are the one that we're working.
Both of them. While I'm at it. And it don't have to be anytime soon.
No, I'll go do it. So while we have ten minutes, you guys have been getting, uh, the legislative alerts for L A B T R. What are your thoughts on that? And is anyone, is anyone going on Thursday to give testimony?
Uh, no, I'll be in Salina, Kansas.
So they've been sending them out, um, and actually I was going to ask you because I didn't want to do anything without visiting with you, but we actually got one from Jay Hall on my listserv encouraging, uh, us to get with your chambers and your cities and your all of your kind of big organizational groups in your county, uh, to everyone kind of put pressure on them. And I was wondering if you guys had done anything with that or?
I have not. I'm in a unique spot.
Well, so I was wondering about that. It's your best to just be.
Well, yes, I'm kind of staying neutral. I like the idea of getting it back in place, but I think the cards are lined up pretty strong to repeal it down here.
Well, so that's what I had read on there. So I wasn't sure how.
I hear, I hear a lot of noise. They're gonna rethink that.
On that, I think there's also going to be a renewed effort to have counties what they can spend and, you know, without this and a, and a cap, things could really.
No R and R and all this stuff.
Yes, I mean.
But we don't have any of that to peak. They didn't have to be R and R. They don't have gap.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And who is sending you this? Is this your?
Mike Taylor, he's the legislative, um, contact for K A C sends those updates. Do you get those?
I haven't been getting them.
Okay.
It comes from info at Kansas County title.
And then Mike Taylor sends. Are you signed up for your listserv on?
Yeah, I get thanks from my lister.
Okay, hold on. I'm gonna forward you this because it starts with Mike Taylor. Like he always sends the updates to the listservs and I wonder if he should, do you get Mike Taylor?
Let me look.
I was gonna say surely he sends it to all listservs. But I'll send you this and then Kimberly Falls sends out follow-ups and Jay Hall's and.
I've, I get Kimberly Falls, thanks for that.
So like Richard Malm from Jefferson County asked what time was the hearing and then Kimberly, uh, responds and then Jay Hall uh, emailed us saying K A C would also encourage you to get with your local chambers of commerce, business leaders. And any community groups involved encouraging them to submit testimony in support of restoring L A B T R. So Mark refreshed me this morning because I had that seven hundred thousand number in my head. But that included the county city revenue sharing piece and I don't think this bill deals with that. They're just dealing with L A B T R.
Right, stupid issues.
Yeah, so that's two hundred and eighty thousand approximately.
I'm not getting to send me, uh, your gate from right here, but I'm getting to send information through that info to Kansas Counties.
Okay, through your listserv problem.
Yeah, so I think, so as far as Mike, he has sent me some things, but not the same thing. But I still have the information. So this info at KansasCounty.org isn't the list served correctly.
Uh, and that's a newsletter, I think, comes out.
Okay, so I could, I could.
Yes.
I, I copied that email down and I will request that.
That one.
Do the search, see if you're getting any, just, just have any, what Kansas County. Type in L A B T R on your search. And see what you get coming up. Let me see what I was to.
This one's even.
Oh, I copied. Question. I just, this, you know, I think I used to get thanks from that and I don't know, I think that's. It might be expand. You know, which she told me to me. She seems to the Mike Taylor one, that's just an influence Kansas County. So between the two, you should be over.
Okay.
Yeah, and your list service, the K S Commissioners, you'd be two at Kansas County.
Yeah. So I didn't think it was. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't.
So no one.
These are regular paces. Those are all of that one to search for.
Wow.
So that's just that big admission. So there is a regular update. It's a newsletter, I think. Thank you. That's interesting. It's different.
So do we want to do anything with this or?
I think you officially do want to advocate for it now, moving down there.
Yeah, I, I think it would be great. I don't think I can get Thursday, when, when is that Thursday morning?
Oh, I know Thursday's out for me, right?
Thursday's out for me.
You can't send like a letter to support me do that.
Okay. Yeah, I think they said that you can submit testimony even if you can't be there by Wednesday. So maybe we could just talk about what that looks like and making sure just can use us in front of.
Simple letter. Yeah, maybe I'm fine with that. The thing is they get to eighty counties soon, but it's, it's, they'll hear it.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. You're like two steps in front of us. I appreciate you. Thank you. All right, so ten fifteen, uh, two thousand and twenty-four organizational meeting. You know, a couple minutes early if that matters or we should do this. Do I need to call a separate meeting or it's just within, so we're fine?
I mean, I think it's been done both ways in the past, so. It's just, it's just an agenda item.
Okay, so we, Atchison County organizational meeting agenda for January eighth of two thousand and twenty-four to nominate the chairperson for two thousand and twenty-four.
Move nominate, um, first you quit in the chairman. Well, second.
Well, I'm outvoted apparently. So it's been moved to second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I can, versus the state, the state. To nominate a vice chairman.
You better believe in yourself. We believe in you.
Thank you. Uh, to nominate vice chairman for two thousand and twenty-four.
I would nominate Commissioner Noel to be vice chair.
I would second that. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That says. Discuss three to zero.
Speeches or anything.
Uh, discussion of current committee boards with removal and additions if needed. We added A A E D C. We, we removed A S A F board, Atchison Senior Village Board, Chamber Board, Joint Communications Board. And we're adding, we're not removing the Economic Development, which is E D A G, uh, a separate. Sorry, a separate Economic Development Group. As well. So the committee boards assigned to commissioners and staff for two thousand and twenty-four, area agency on aging. I would like to recommend Eric, Commissioner Noel.
Okay, just, uh, before we get going. Do we vote on every one of these things? And does that make it really complicated for, I mean, or in the past, I was thinking one year that we like done the document, then we voted to pass it. So it was streamlined. Instead of having every vote.
I mean, that would probably make it a lot easier. Just saying that whoever's going to be on their committee boards and then four twenty-four and then just approve that as.
That section is, so then we're not having vote after vote after vote. I, I think that was in the past. That was a request. So.
So area agency on aging, Eric Noel?
Yes.
And we're sticking with that if you wanted to say, because you're the current.
Um, the, uh, the, well, now I'm treasurer of N E C A P. I'm the president of the board, so and they requested that I stay if I could.
Community Corrections Advisory Board. Commissioner Rebus. County Health. Commissioner Noel.
Yes.
J-Cab, Commissioner Rebus.
You can.
N E K E S.
Uh, well, N E C A P was me.
Oh, sorry. N E C A P, Regional Board, Eric Noel.
Yes. N E K E S, I would take it again.
Okay. Commissioner Noel. Project Concern.
You know, I've been on that, but if you're you kind of thinned out a little bit, if you wanna do that, that'd be fine.
Okay, I'll do Project Concern. Safety Committee. I can do that. It's up thinned out if you want.
Okay.
Solid Waste, I can do that again if you guys are.
You're in the now, okay. I was gonna have to use on that one, I was sure. That's pretty balanced.
Um, Atchison Area Economic Development, the A A E D C, Commissioner Rebus.
And E D A G.
So we're keeping those on the same line, even though they're two different organizations.
Yeah, but they're both economic related. And there's a lot of cross.
Do you think we should list them? I think we should list them separately though, just for the fact of like J-Cab and well, maybe not. You think they should be on the one line, even though they're two different organizations? I mean, it doesn't really matter. It's all in just.
I think the intent is the same person should be on both.
Yeah, yeah.
I apologize, I took off the E D A G. That's okay, um, but I will.
Okay, so.
No problem. This will stop better.
And then we had talked about the Atchison County Extension Board. Um, I feel like it might be better to have them come to us for a quarterly update. Um, just so if we have more in-depth questions or questions, we have a professional here that can answer them.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll ask them to provide quarterly updates. Are we gonna want quarterly updates from all appropriations that we get to? Or just, just extension?
Yeah, I do case by case. Unless you have some major project.
Well, historically, we asked Jim like at the chamber before to come and give us updates, but if we don't feel like it, I just thought I'd mention it. So then E D A G, uh, will be Commissioner Rebus.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so let me just, um, make sure I I'll make one motion. One motion to approve committee boards assigned to commissioners for two thousand and twenty-four. Area Agency on Aging, Commissioner Noel, Community Corrections Advisory Board, Commissioner Rebus. County Health, Commissioner Noel, J-Cab, Commissioner Rebus. N E K, oh, sorry, N E C A P, Regional Board, Commissioner Noel. N E K E S, Commissioner Noel, Project Concern, Commissioner Quinn, Safety Committee, Commissioner Quinn, Solid Waste Advisory Board, Commissioner Quinn. A A E D C, Commissioner Rebus. Atchison County Extension Board, we will not have a representative, but we can ask them to provide updates as needed and E D A G, Commissioner Rebus. Do I have a motion to approve those assignments?
So move, say it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Item number five, renew Memorial Hall trustee for Larry Services position, term expired December two thousand and twenty-three. The deadline will be extended for this appointment. Uh, I wanted to double check on this while we're all here as when we have these openings, did we want to forego the deadlines and put until filled, until position is filled? I'm just wondering because we had discussed that with previous ones that we had deadlines and then confusion and kind of learned our lesson of what's the best for everyone. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure we give guidance on how we want that. I have been reading, so I, I think the city possibly put out or another county. I've been seeing how other people are doing it and some of them, it just says this may, this position will remain open until filled or vacant until.
Yeah, in certain ones. Bill, I guess it's so specific in that qualifications that it takes some time.
Uh, and maybe we could, we're at, uh, taking applications until something. And then we could appoint after that. I mean, because if if you don't have a date for them to turn in their application, they, they might say, oh, I thought I had plenty of time.
Or we could say, position will be appointed on this date. That way, because that's what we got into when we had the late turn-in before our meeting and we accepted it. So it's like, we want to make sure that up until, and I remember Roden Bridge even when we were at E O C where someone brought in their bid like to our meeting, like before we before we vote, right? So if it's like, position will be filled this day, then anytime up until that moment, I mean, because we're gonna fill the position. So like, if you want to bring it in, have it here because the position will be filled at ten AM on the sixteenth or whatever day, uh, that kind of might be good. Because then it's up to your discretion. Like if you don't have it in when we vote, you don't. But if it's in, you know.
Do we have any applications for this position yet?
There has been one turned in.
I knew one was called.
It was yours. It was the one you.
Okay.
Does that sound good to you or what do you think?
I think, you know, accepting letters of interest, um, up until the date of appointment on such and such a date. I was gonna ask more specifically as far as a date you guys had in mind. Do you want to give them three weeks, a month? How much time do you, because I'm going to create a letter. Basically the same thing I'm gonna put on the website. I'll make sure it gets put on Facebook and I will hand deliver it to Fred and Chuck. Okay, for the Legion and the, um, but do you want it in the paper?
Yeah, let's, let's move along because I mean, they, I know they want to get some things done. Make some decisions.
So just wish. Well.
Today's the eighth, so by the twenty-third?
Twenty-third. Yeah.
Because this will be filled on the twenty-third.
Thank you. And I will get that out.
Okay, thank you. Approved holidays for county for two thousand and twenty-four. Two thousand and twenty-four. So the two thousand and twenty-four holidays proposed, President's Day, Monday, February nineteenth. Memorial Day, Monday, May seventh, twenty-seventh. Juneteenth, Wednesday, June nineteenth. Independence Day, Thursday, July fourth. Labor Day, Monday, September second. Veterans Day, Monday, November eleventh. Thanksgiving Day, Thursday, November twenty-eighth. Thanksgiving Day after, Friday, November twenty-ninth. Christmas Eve, Tuesday, December twenty-fourth. Christmas Day, Wednesday, December twenty-fifth. New Year's Day, Wednesday, January first of two thousand and twenty-five. And Martin Luther King Junior Day, Monday, January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve the holidays as presented for two thousand and twenty-four?
So move, say it.
Okay, it's been moved to second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Number seven, approve Columbus Day employee, employee training from Monday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I have a motion to approve.
So move. Second.
The move and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Number eight, approve work session, official meeting dates and times for two thousand and twenty-four. And then this has several questions of what works. I'm in favor of keeping how we have been. I think it's been really nice to be able to be having the conversations first time for the public to hear the conversation. Um, I've had really great feedback from constituents that um, if they want to watch, you know, it's there. You know, there are longer meetings, um, that are videoed, but I think that's good. If you care, then you will watch the meeting. I haven't had any negative feedback about it. I know when we first started, we were kind of trying to figure out that nine to ten spot for department heads, but I feel like it's been good. Everyone I just, we've done it at, as you come and everybody's patient and waits and you know, if department heads need to talk to us from nine to ten, we're available or after the meeting, we adjourned in a workshop for further time. And Tuesdays seem to work for for staff.
I think it's working. I think, I do know that for one hour makes it a little tight some weeks, but the idea of adjourning to the workshop at the end. If we, we kind of seem like we have kind of gentleman's agreement, maybe no more than an hour or so if we need to go over some things, but I think that's working. Somebody just follow up with you and discuss with the department head afterwards. So.
I just feel for me and the commissioner, I do a better job because we're actually having the conversation the first time for the public to hear versus having the conversation in the morning and then talking about it again a second time where I already asked my questions. I know the answers. So it's like, why? It's more of a motion, like checking the boxes in the afternoon, uh, before versus this is like time to ask. Anybody, you have any comments?
For the older system itself.
Okay.
I like having, being able to have a break because sometimes when you come in at nine and you do that, you, you get into these heavy conversations. And it's two or three o'clock. We've had really no break and it can, it can get almost. I'd be in favor of putting a little thirty minute break in there for kids somehow. It would be a bad idea. We could recess for thirty minutes. We always do that for a lunch break or something.
So I, I feel like if we're going to do that, then we should just short maybe I don't know. It's just like when we're here to get things done and department heads come here. I mean, I get it, the lunch break piece, but do we just shorten the time? And because we can always extend the time. We can always go beyond one o'clock, but if you need lunch at twelve-thirty. I mean, versus taking a half hour between twelve and twelve, twelve-thirty to come back for a half an hour. Does that make, like if we're ending at one, I don't know. I'm just kind of a power through, get it done, but.
Yeah.
I if you need a lunch break, we can look at that maybe.
I can keep the structure we have, but we, we can always recess for thirty minutes and decide we need to. We're gonna long, we know we're gonna be here till three o'clock. For some reason, we want to do that.
Oh, right.
I mean, just.
You're saying if we, if we know we're gonna be there till late, then we want a lunch break.
We know you have a couple of long, but we can always say we're gonna take a thirty minute lunch recess or something. It's not just about lunch. Sometimes you just eat it.
Right.
It's enough to brain thirty.
Absolutely. It's, it's about as much of that as, as having lunch, although that's kind of my, my habit. I miss lunch.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you right, we will keep it the same, but we will be mindful of our late days and make sure that we're recessing for a lunch.
Yeah.
And then.
That would help me a lot. It's good for the entire, also be watching too. They, they need bigger things to do too. That's the kind of follow, you know.
Okay.
So Kelly needs a break.
Okay, so approve work session, official meeting dates and times for two thousand and twenty-four. What day of the week do you want to conduct the work session? Tuesday. What time would you like to start your work session from nine AM to ten AMs? What day of the week would you like to hold your regular open meetings? Tuesday. What time would you like to start the official meeting? Ten AM to one PM? Do you have a motion to approve?
So.
Give us a second.
Okay, so moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three. Passes three to zero. Approved date and time of organizational meeting for twenty twenty five. No normal meeting on the following Tuesday. The second Monday of the month would fall on January thirteenth of twenty twenty five. Have a motion to approve.
So. Second.
Moving seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Uh. So what about the other one would be the, uh, when elections happen with the canvas? That's what we have a committee on that Monday, right? So we should, should we list those?
Just get on the back there.
Oh, no, no, very.
Not very much.
Very.
They couldn't. I last we got a little bit. I knew I read it somewhere, but we.
Okay, to name the following banks as eligible depositories, Exchange Bank and Trust, U M B, and Union State Bank of Everest, which is Bank of Atchison. No changes from previous year's listing. Do I have a motion to approve?
So. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Number eleven is a recommendation made by the Atchison County Treasurer to name Exchange Bank and Trust as the main depository for Atchison County. There's a letter submitted to us for our recommendation. Um, as well attached. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Verification of spending authority for department heads. All department heads. Were originally set at twenty five hundred dollars. On October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, the spending authority for public works was raised to seventy five hundred. With all other department heads remaining at twenty five hundred. So, um, the clarification I just want to make on here is since we don't have a public works department. That the spending authority for Road and Bridge was raised to seventy five hundred. Currently, we don't have one. Um, so I just want to make sure that the understanding of what we're voting on is seventy five hundred spending the limit for Road and Bridge.
And would it stay the same then for some ways?
The twenty five hundred.
Yes. And all other requirements.
Yes. So.
So.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Mileage reimbursement rate for twenty twenty four. The IRS is sixty seven cents per mile, state of Kansas, sixty five. Five cents per mile. This was set. For fiscal year twenty twenty four from July first, twenty twenty three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. See attached. Information. Do I have a motion to approve the mileage reimbursement as presented?
So which one we approving? Sixty seven, sixty five five? What is it currently?
Fifty eight five.
Fifty eight. Oh, it's been so behind already. Well, cash went crazy.
And and I think it came into play like last July first is when they hit up to them. Yeah.
Cause some of us I deal with it.
We went with what the state was at last year.
Yeah, that's what I.
Yeah.
The fiscal year run.
So it's a change sixty seven after July first, most likely. The pressure is more sixty seven. Is that going to affect budget?
Not by that much.
Okay, I just didn't know how much of that we got, so.
Not a lot of people use the mileage.
Okay, well, I just didn't want to get us in a position where. We over on that too.
Okay, so Commissioner Rebus made a motion to up the IRS sixty seven cents per mile. About a second.
I'll say.
Then moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Meal reimbursement verification. Meal reimbursement as stated. Fifteen dollars per meal, total of thirty eight dollars per day. Can use thirty dollars from two meals to make up for one. Receipts are required for each meal. If meals are included in registration of meeting, you cannot include those in per meal costs. Receipts need to be included prior to payment. The county will not pay for tips or alcoholic beverages. Um.
What about? Uh, tax? Could we put the sales tax or?
Sales tax has to be paid on.
Yes, okay.
And also I wanted to ask, should we add any other verbiage as far as? Meal rebirth reimbursement locally. Like I know the struggles we've had. Should there be any additional verbiage in this for us to approve and 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 put into the?
I'm not sure because this, yeah, because this is an excerpt from the policy.
Okay, so. Okay, so then we can.
Do you, do you mean to reference out of town travel or something like that?
Yeah, so we've had just a couple instances and we've coached and hadn't got any. Um. It's still happening of like local lunches just periodically, so. Um, even though it's been coached not to do it and. It's not explicit. When I read this, it's not explicit, so for someone not asking and just reading this. I just feel like we maybe need to. Dial it down a little bit.
I did in the notes, I added, um, it's a three. Full flyer for the state of Kansas. They do have a little bit, their substance, um, substance expense, can't say it. Um, but they have a daily standard rate. Um, it's meals and incidental expenses reimbursement and they have a little bit of verbiage and it's more of a travel. Um, while in travel status.
Yes.
So they have a paragraph in there that's on that, that kind of changes the verbiage just a tad little bit that we maybe.
Yeah, so we put our new policy to do things.
I feel like that would be a good idea.
The dollar amount misses. On the low side. But. You know, it's how many people actually? Buy meals in the travel. There's a lot of times conferences include lunches and stuff, so mainly on the travel day.
Yeah.
Yeah, and maybe, um, if it's a conference during the day, you'll get your lunch by the conference, but then you'll have to have your.
Still thirty bucks.
It's something that we, um, experienced when going to. Hey, with C I C, so we stay in a hotel that's away from everything and they only have two restaurants in that hotel. And you either. It's the fancy or you go and have some sandwiches. And so we experienced that we would have to take both of our fifteen dollar ones to be able to pay for just one dinner. And that they don't. Give us any for breakfast, and so we were kind of like. Stuck with two to choose from.
Yeah.
And it was the cost that was. It's even sub sandwiches. Twenty bucks.
We approve this for now, but revisit it sometime this year before budget.
Yeah, because I definitely think we need to add verbiage and maybe look.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So move it through.
Okay.
Second.
Then moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. Cell phone reimbursement verification. Current rates are thirty dollars per month for voice calling only. And sixty dollars per month for voice text and data. If the department head authorizes the use of an employee's cell phone for the benefit of the county. And the employee voluntarily chooses to use his or her own cell phone for county business. The county will reimburse the individual at the rate authorized by the county. Request for this reimbursement must be made. On the cell phone reimbursement form and submitted to the Human Resources Department. Reimbursement is taxable pursuant to IRS guidelines. Um. Voice calling was thirty dollars per month. The rate was adjusted January thirteenth of twenty twenty in the commission meeting. Voice text and and data was sixty dollars per month, rate adjusted. January thirteenth, twenty twenty in commission meeting. Request for this reimbursement must be made on the cell phone reimbursement form and submitted to the Human Resources Department. The policy. Will not apply to employees of Atchison Senior Village. The administrator of Atchison Senior Village may set. Reimbursement rates for Atchison Senior Village employees.
So. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Verify. Kansas Open Records Act cost for copies and research time. Copies cost. Fifty cents per one sided page. Research costs. Five dollars per quarter hour. For service, for search. Review. Costs seven dollars and fifty cents per cap quarter hour for review. Do I have a motion to approve?
Soon.
Okay.
Say.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution. For waiving the gap for twenty twenty four on. I have a resolution attached. Let me know what number. I'm coming up with twenty twenty four, fifteen thirty two, I want to divert a path, I'm not sure. I figured you were looking.
It's fifteen thirty two.
Okay. Resolution number twenty twenty four. Dash fifteen thirty two. Whereas the county of Atchison, Kansas has determined that the financial statements and financial reports for the year ended twenty twenty four to be prepared in conformity with the requirements of K S A seventy five dash. Eleven twenty A A. Are not relevant to the requirements of the cash. Basis and budget laws of this state and are. And are of no significant value to the county commissioners. Or the members of the general public of the county of Atchison. And whereas there are no revenue bond ordinances or resolutions. Or other ordinances or resolutions. Of the municipality, which require financial statements and financial reports to be prepared in conformity with K S A seventy five dash eleven twenty. A A for the year ended twenty twenty four. Now therefore be it resolved by the Atchison County Commissioners. By the county commissioners of county of Atchison, Kansas in regular meeting duly assembled on this eighth day of January. Twenty twenty four, that the county commissioners waive the requirements of K S A seventy five dash eleven twenty A A. As they apply to the county of Atchison for the year ended twenty twenty four. Be it further resolved that the county commissioner shall. Cause the financial statements and financial reports of the county of Atchison to be prepared. On the basis of cash receipts and the disbursements. As adjusted to show compliance with the cash, cash basis and budget laws of the state.
So. Say.
Okay, then moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Music for verb. Would you rather number one?
Yes.
Um, number eighteen is to discuss county government day and countywide cleanup day.
What was it?
Number eighteen.
No, what days?
Oh, so for countywide cleanup day, uh, last year was our first year of doing it and, um, it was suggested to coincide with Earth Day. Um, so if we do that in similar. Uh, status or Earth Day. This year for twenty twenty four is Monday, April twenty second, so that would make our cleanup Friday. April nineteenth and Saturday, the twenty.
Yes.
Yeah.
What's the dates again?
Friday, April nineteenth and Saturday, April twentieth. So do I have a motion to approve countywide cleanup day, um, for Friday, April nineteenth and Saturday, April.
So. Second.
Then move the seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. I need to look at the county government.
Is there a front of one legislature? The county government day, because it's all they come in here.
This is where the case comes to.
Okay.
And when is the last time? Wonder what we had.
Is that like COVID?
So April.
Yes, it was.
Twenty twenty four.
He's on a commission meeting day or?
He's typically on a commission meeting day because the commissioners would always go down to the Legion for the, um, the Alps.
Yeah.
Was.
Yeah.
In years past. It was discussed about maybe having it in the fall instead of the spring. Is that? An alternative, is that good, is that bad? I think that it coincided with. The government studies and the school more than the spring, because when we were had it in the spring. Kids were about ready to get out of school. It was kind of a. Almost. They were going out the door and it's. It's free day.
Right.
So. I I but. Again, we're pitting that up with elections. We're hitting that against, uh, budget, budget hearings. So, I mean. It's just, I I wanted to bring that up for discussion.
That's a good point. I I mentioned fall, it's also elections, that's, it is a good time.
Well, it is for, maybe it would be a good learning experience for the kids, but we also have to be mindful of. Who's doing the elections and.
Right.
And they also are. Big. Uh. Planners of of that day and. Of the government day.
So who drives the date selection? I mean. We're given to school and teachers.
The schools.
Okay.
And it's, it's very difficult to. Get all three of this area schools on the same day. Um, so there's, there's been days we've only had two schools. It was one day that we had one school and it was a large group. Um, so.
I don't know if we could come up with a day today that would, because I mean, if if we would want to prove it, then. Just say at the discretion of the clerk to. To, uh, find a date that would work. I mean, is that?
If we do the fall, if you like in September, it's way ahead of the curve on some of your deadlines, I think, that I mean, deadlines all year long.
Um, yeah, I mean, September probably would be more doable than. October.
That's what I'm thinking.
So we're just going to create our own Atchison County day.
We, we used to have a county government day. Um, and it was, it was basically driven by the Atchison family, Mrs. Atchison. Um, and, um. Her family. With the.
B F W.
Yes. Oh, they would basically have meal. Set up. So we would basically have. What they did here.
Seems like we would meet in the courtroom and, uh. Maybe have a presentation about county government, uh, may maybe be. Did the sheriff speak one year? Seemed like. Or it it was, it maybe it was internal, maybe it was external, seemed like.
I believe the last time we had one J V. She. Kind of took that and ran with that.
And then they broke up and they would go to different offices and and, uh. Individual department head would show them what they done. I think they actually toured to jail, they.
When they, when they would. At school, they would send the invitation to the school and the students would sign up. Under a certain division, either law enforcement, commissioners, county appraiser. And so all of the department heads basically would take on these five or six or ten. When certain law, law enforcement would take on twenty, because everyone wanted to go to her, but they would. They would move around the courthouse no matter what department they were. Assigned to.
So I was just thinking, um, September would. Possibly be. A good one for the fact that on that countywide cleanup day, all of our schools were involved in helping and that's in April. So if we sent some informational thing to the schools, we could give them both dates as far as planning ahead purposes. Maybe have a better turnout, like. Also of communicating like, hey, we appreciated you last year. Countywide cleanup dates this April. September, we're going to do. You know, something with your students for for the government day. Um, just a thought, because. The. National County Government Month is April, so like students can only do so many things, right, of like extra.
It's getting pretty busy. It's supposed to junior, seniors, or.
Um, seniors, maybe.
It's all seniors, okay.
And at at times, I mean, one year it was kind of late and you could tell that they were already halfway out the door. You know, and.
Um.
Good point.
Yeah. And I don't knock it because I was there once too, but you know, I'm just the best bang for the buck. And especially. It was a bit tradition, we'd been doing it as long as I can remember, it was always done, Martray. We had talked about it. We had talked about it several times in the fall, well, now that there's been a hesitation, we're really, if we're gonna start it back up again, it might be a good opportunity to try it.
And that gives us longer to plan and like and everybody.
So, I guess I'm trying to figure, who's, who's leading, so this, are we leading or gonna ask the BFW or lead or somebody to lead and let's.
Um, I will get the hold of Nancy Clifford probably. To see if they would still have an interest in helping out, um, and then we can open there, because they did a good job of trying to contact the schools, going to the schools to find out if we can get the children.
And who's Nancy with?
Um, the Atchison family.
Oh, she was one of the. Nice, yeah, that would be cool.
I, I just, her because I know her.
Okay. And then you can give us, start planning, yeah, I think it'd be nice to come from us as far as. Then maybe.
Cool, safety committee involved, we're gonna put twenty high school kids in jail. Maybe issues there.
Okay, so we're going to table then any decisions on county government day till we have further information. Okay, so.
Can I interrupt one more time, because I do know that we do have the Capitol Day. Oh, yeah, those dates, and there's two of those on the cap, KAC website. And I did usually have a brief. I didn't think to put them on.
That's okay, but that's a good thought, we should get those.
So, one of those is the same date, it's dental day, it's also one of the county days, so, so I'll be there for sure that day. Eighth, February the eighth is one of the weekends.
Okay, January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, local government day.
Right, that's good.
And February eighth is county day at the Capitol. Um, the county day at the Capitol, it's February eighth, twenty twenty four, beginning at eight AM.
So, I'll be there that day, but I probably will be intermittent helping with any table or something.
And then January twenty fourth is the local government day.
We usually go to that?
We have, yeah.
Remember that morning, I can't change, if I could come in later, so.
County day at the Capitol is when we set up our booth.
That was in February. I don't believe I've ever, personally, I have never been to one in January.
I, so I feel like that was more of us taking a tour, visiting offices, watching the like, I think we even got to watch like a hearing of.
Yeah, it was probably on purpose that day, you know, it's legislative contact day.
That was, well, we, we done the same thing in February, because.
Yeah, we went to the KDOT meeting. And I know Joe and Kim and. Wes, yeah.
Yeah, so, so the local government day, they tag team with the League of Municipalities. And the we gather for exciting, informative leg legislative focus day, yep, that was that.
On the schedule hearing on some relevant building, they do, do a L A B T R building day or something, who knows?
Yeah. So, that's what that was. And that event schedules just from one PM to seven PM, so it's not like.
West from one to seven, the government days?
Um, yes.
That's one to seven.
Yep, and the reception with legislators is at five PM. And that's just what they have on their website right now, twenty twenty four. Okay, number nineteen, approve the twenty twenty four budget calendar. We have the proposed budget calendar.
Shouldn't you be approving the twenty five budget calendar? I'm sorry.
No, okay, so I looked for a motion to approve the twenty twenty five budget calendar as presented.
I'll second uh, couple questions.
Okay, it's been, do you want to ask them before?
Yeah, so, we were starting earlier, you said. So, give me example of how much earlier we are, because I'm just, this is just a whole bunch of dates in front of me.
So, um, would like to have everything kind of set in the system and having our discussions by May. Um, so we kind of know what we're doing, so between May and August, there's a lot of room to have discussions with you three, with departments, um, able to run scenarios if you want to, um, and then have a, like a hard deadline by the end of August, so we're ready to do everything we need to, to the county clerk by September, so there's not a lot of deadlines that we have to get real you know, come up against, it's, it's a kind of all ironed out. So, I guess what you're asking is, is by May first, kind of have everything in there.
Starting point.
As a starting point.
Yeah, it's, it's about a four or five weeks sooner than last year, probably. I mean, that's just what I'm curious.
Well, in there, I, I don't know if this is pertinent or not, but if there is legislation passed by the state that would affect our budget, when is that usually cooked in the books, so, I mean, because that could be something that.
First, we, we, you know. It should be on a calendar, it's on those calendars, I've looked at it.
Yeah, I just couldn't take a when exactly that would be, because, you know, that would really could change up what we're doing.
You know, not much happens at that very last session of the school. L A B T R could be a hot issue, it could be a last minute thing.
That's wonderful.
So, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, so number twenty is the Rural Opportunity Zone Resolution for twenty twenty four. Resolution number twenty twenty four dash fifteen thirty three. Resolution of the Board of Atchison County Commissioners authorizing participation in rural opportunity zone student loan repayment program for the calendar year of twenty twenty four. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, Kansas pursuant to KSA twenty twenty one seventy four dash fifty two twenty three. The Board of County Commissioners expressed its intent to participate in the Rural Opportunity Zone Student Loan Repayment Program. Atchison County has been designated a rural opportunity zone pursuant to KSA twenty twenty one supplement seventy four dash fifty two twenty two as of July first, twenty twenty three. The county population was sixteen thousand one hundred and eight, as certified by the Kansas Department of Revenue. Atchison County Commissioners hereby obligate Atchison County to participate in the raw student loan repayment program as provided by KSA twenty twenty one supplement seventy four dash fifty two twenty three for a period of five years which shall be irrevocable. Atchison County agrees to pay in equal shares with the state of Kansas the outstanding student loan balances of any resident individuals for five years. If the resident individual meets the terms of qualification provided by the state of Kansas in KSA twenty twenty one supplement seventy four dash fifty two twenty three. And the appropriate rules and regulations, the number of qualified resident individuals receiving such payments will be subject to the available availability of funds. Atchison County intends to enter into partnerships with cities, employers and foundations for the direct sponsorship of rural opportunity zone applicants. Sponsored applicants must meet all the qualifications of the raws program. All sponsorships will be subject to raw student loan repayment rules and regulations. The maximum amount, maximum student loan balance for each qualified resident individual to be repaid jointly by Atchison County and the state of Kansas shall be fifteen thousand over a term of five years. Atchison County shall allocate zero dollars a year for the purpose of matching payments for the state of Kansas to qualified resident individuals. Atchison County shall revise its raws budget on an annual basis submitting a new resolution to the state of Kansas by January thirtieth each year. Atchison County shall submit their obligation in full to the Department of Commerce before the first day of October each year. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be published once in the official county newspaper and shall be in effect from and after its date of publication. Do you have a motion to approve?
Looked, second.
Then moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero, it was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, Kansas, this eighth day of January twenty twenty four.
Have we had any people that have used this program?
That's probably because we allocate zero dollars a year to it.
Well, if somebody applied, I mean, would there be?
No, because we don't have a budget for it, so we're allocating zero dollars again, so we would just be.
I think it does allow other employers to use the program.
They could.
But they could do it if we were.
Yeah, I think it's being utilized.
Yeah, it is, it is, just not Atchison County.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Sorry.
Okay, item number twenty one, set the twenty twenty four canvas dates and election meeting dates. The dates below for the canvas of the presidential preference primary and the August primary will not require a special publication. Presidential preference primary will be Tuesday, March nineteenth. The county commission will have no meeting that day. The presidential preference primary canvas will be Monday, March twenty fifth with a regular county commission meeting that day. August primary election will be Tuesday, August sixth with no county commission meeting that day. August primary canvas will be Monday, August twelfth with a regular county commission meeting that day. November general election will be Tuesday, November fifth with no county commission meeting that day. And November election canvas will be Tuesday, November twelfth which is due to the Veterans Day holiday, and we will have our regular county commission meeting that day. I would like to ask that there be no regular meetings on the three election days, March nineteenth, August sixth and November fifth.
Same move.
Okay.
Um, I'll second with a question.
Okay.
Um, I mean, that's four meetings or three meetings that we were canceling, could, would there be any appetite to move them later in the week or to do something like that, I'm just I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, because.
They're pretty spread out, so it helps a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I, I don't, can't think of anything, I just thought it was worth discussing maybe moving. And I know the next day would be out, basically too, because of the busyness of the work solace.
On Monday, I basically take equipment out. Um, on Wednesday, I basically go out, pick it up, Thursday, we'd have our, um, audit, I think you already stayed on it.
On those three dates, is there anything that's close on the uh, uh, budget calendar that would interfere? Alright, then, then I'm fine with it, I just kind of was thinking in my head that.
So, the only thing I guess I, I agree, and I would ask, um, the finance director is it felt like, it feels like we need every amount of time we can when we're doing the budget, um, just for us with you. Um, but if you feel like that we're fine with that March nineteenth knot, or if we should do later in the weekend and be available for you to work.
I think it would be okay.
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay.
I suspect what we may need to do is the week before or after this, we may want to do a vulgar meeting workshop, maybe.
That's a good idea.
To kind of pick up time, so we might kind of, we might want to plan ahead a little bit, maybe look at that mark, see what's better, it's right before or after. Yeah, just a couple hour budget workshop added to the meeting.
I just know there's so much within one week of us together, together, two weeks is like.
I do believe that there was one day, um, during one of the elections, we didn't have the meeting on Tuesday, but I think they called for a special election because something needed to get signed, so that's all.
Okay, so that can be just kind of done as needed.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
Um, so it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. And that wraps up the last item of our Atchison County organizational meeting. Next on the agenda, we have an executive session for fifteen minutes. Non-elected personnel, commission, HR and county council.
I'll move the board of county commissioners recessed in executive session. At eleven oh six A M to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy five that's four, three, one, nine, B, one, and that's the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of executive session in fifteen minutes in the commission room, the courthouse basement, and those present will be uh, the three commissioners, H, HR and county council. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Okay, we are back in open session, um, running a bit behind schedule, um, is the county attorney possibly out there?
She's not.
Okay.
She's online?
Oh, perfect, okay, so we have an executive session, non-elected personnel, thirty minutes, county attorney, commissioners, HR and finance.
I'll move with the board of county commissioners recessed to executive session at eleven twenty two A M to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy five dash four, three, one, nine, B, one. And that the purpose of this closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room of the uh, courthouse basement. And those present will be uh, the three commissioners, uh, HR, uh, county attorney and finance director. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll go into the second session. Oh, sorry, okay, we are back in open session, um, and Mark Zeldner, Finance Director for the K Camp Overview Discussion.
Good morning.
Morning.
So, I sent an email to you all, um, just a, so, little overview of what we received from K Camp, but um, we had the annual contribution for twenty twenty four, the amount um, is three hundred nine thousand and ninety dollars, um, it's way higher than what we were estimated to have for our twenty twenty four rate, um, in June of last year. Um, we had an estimate back of five percent increase and this is way over that, about thirty percent increase. Um, we received a letter from our K Camp Insurance stating that it, uh, the rates have been up for property values, loss severity and reinsurance costs. Um, along with that, several or all of the deductibles change from auto to the mobile equipment such as um, heavy equipment like at Roden Bridge, um, the property uh, storm damage, there was a a deductible added for. A deductible added for storms. Um, and then other mobile equipment, so that could be like equipment in a. Police vehicle or an ambulance or anything, so we can have a claim on equipment inside of a vehicle too. Um, so that is pretty substantial in our amount and it's going to be over budget from what we.
What was pushing?
Two hundred and thirty thousand. And then twenty five thousand of that, that is would be additional from senior village portion. So senior village budgets twenty five thousand for their, um, portion, and then the county is two hundred and thirty, so. Two hundred fifty five, I guess.
And the senior village will be prorated?
It will be, so we'll get, um, our premium back.
Okay.
If and when. The data that is is sold.
Okay.
Um, so I guess just letting you know that it it's over and. Um, there's a purchase order that I had sent to you all. I have. It's it's. Dated for January one, we still have coverage, um, but the dues are or the contribution is due now. So.
So based on the eighty thousand dollar increase.
Mm-hmm.
On top of increasing our deductibles, that doesn't add up to me. That's typically when you increase your deductible. It's less risk on them, so the rates are.
Yep. So in this letter, they talk about a invective storm. Damage claims, so. There are multiple claims. Um, and all of their pooled. Associates and with storm damage, they are claiming that they need to recoup some of the. Costs.
Is that specific to Atchison because we had the lightning strike or that's?
No.
In general, all of their had storm damage.
Correct.
That's why.
Maybe if you were going to read, who like an understanding raise in price, but.
I can read the paragraph maybe. That will help.
Sure.
Um, in recent years, there have been significant increases in member property valuations as a result of. Inflationary impact on building materials and labor costs. At the same time, K Camp members have suffered multiple catastrophic convective storm losses. Because property losses above K Camp's pooling layer of three hundred fifty thousand dollars are transferred to reinsurance. K Camp's primary reinsurer is absorbing more of the costs to recover from convective storms. Some of K Camp's other reinsurers have incurred catastrophic convective storm losses outside of Kansas as well. As a result, K Camp's property reinsurance costs nearly doubled in the twenty three to twenty four program year. Um, and that's about all it says. We're changing to rates, changing to deductibles. Um, had to outline these changes here. So, yes, basically to storm damage, um, they need to recoup some of the costs. So our deductibles are increased and our premium is increased.
You said some of the deductibles went from a thousand to twenty five hundred.
Yeah, so auto, mobile equipment, property and equipment breakdown. I'm sorry, auto and mobile equipment went from one thousand to twenty five hundred. Property and equipment breakdown went from one thousand to five thousand. And they added convective storm, which was included in property before at a thousand and now it's ten thousand.
Oh, the convective storm, sorry. It's a severe storm with thunder and lightning. So we hit those occasionally, like a lot. So I think this is a recipe for lots of deductibles. I mean, when lightning strikes somewhere, there's minor damage, it still costs us five or six thousand bucks instead of deduct. I agree to shopping. I almost think we have calls into. How, uh, solvent are they or?
Yeah.
You know that, okay, we had this one. Larger than normal year, which. Statistically, that would be accounted for in their pool, so. I mean, it also when you recoup. Funds expended to me, that would be a recipe for making up for the the costs that they've already paid out. But then the deductibles, I mean, they're, it's almost like they're making it for twice. The deductibles are future. Things that I don't, I don't know. It just seems like it's a a double dip.
I agree. I would be in favor of having Mark drop, um, the insurance as well. And reach out to, you know. You can post something that we're looking and reach out to a few. Of them and see if anyone reaches out to you and 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 get some comparables because that that doesn't seem right. Like I can. It just doesn't like the rate increase and the deductible increase. I'm like, you're double dip, that feels like.
We also talked to the workshop a little bit about the violas, so we don't have to do those. Uh, let's let's reach out to Michelle. She's on there, but. But maybe getting.
Okay.
K Camp's files. They were seventy two, so you can find out. What some of the ground rules are about. Moving forward here.
Okay.
It could also be a possibility to have the representatives from K Camp. You guys. Help us as well.
Yeah, I looked at the right front that we're looking. I wouldn't hesitate to have that.
So the purchase order for K Camp, um, look for a motion to table.
So move, second.
Okay, so we moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye. Pass three to zero.
Okay, um, the next. Item is K work. Uh, there's a purchase order for our workers' compensation. Um, premiums for twenty twenty four. And it's a hundred and forty two thousand.
Five eighty nine.
Five eighty nine, thank you.
Yep. So I look for a motion to approve the purchase order to K work in the amount of one hundred forty two thousand, five hundred and eighty nine dollars for the twenty twenty four premium.
So move, I have a question.
Okay.
Second. What was the cost? Uh, last year? What's the difference? I mean, the claims? No, the actual premium cost difference. Oh, this is. Like, actually, you know that's. Mean between carrot? Yeah. What was that different? Well, that's, that's not. There's a lot more to it than just. Oh, I understand that. This this is the premium alone. We can talk about the other things. This would start with this.
So. Hundred and thirty three thousand, four eighty five. However, that. Is with discounts taken out of it, so before that is two hundred and six thousand, nine sixty six. So we get a premium discount and a discount for being safe.
So the the final expense was what again?
So comparing apples to apples, two oh six, nine sixty six minus one forty two, five eighty.
Correct.
Sixty four thousand, three seventy seven. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero.
Thank you.
But you save sixty four thousand dollars here.
I know, and then.
And you get.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Okay. We have, um. Executive session. Non-elected personnel, thirty minutes, senior village, H R, commissioners.
I'm moving board of county commissioners recesses, excuse me, recess and executive session. At twelve oh three P M. To discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel. As allowed by K S A seventy five dash four, three, and one, nine, B, two. No, excuse me, yeah, B one, and that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes. In the commission room of the courthouse basement, those present will be three commissioners, H R, and senior village admin. Say it.
It's been moved and seconded. All of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. Yeah, you know. Okay, perfect. Twenty minutes.
Just Pat back in the area.
I, he may be in.
Pat, Joe, and Mark. Red.
Yep.
Snowing out there, just. It's nice and chilly.
Thank you, Lindsay. Oh, I think I. Say anything. Alright.
Yeah, at least I muted you.
You're fine. We're back in open session. Yeah, I told you that other one maybe next week that was suggested. Alright. Let me know. Yep.
We're ready?
Yep.
I'm moving with the board of county commissioners recess and executive session. At twelve thirty four P M. For consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. As allowed by K S A seventy five dash four, three, one. Four, three, one, nine, B, two, and that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And that the board come out and take the amount of executive session at. In in twenty minutes, in the commission room, courthouse basement, and those present will be, uh, three commissioners, uh. Uh, Pat, Joe, and Mark. Say it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Okay, we are back in open session, um, unfinished business. Do we want to discuss the snow day? Policy, um. Historically. They've contacted the chair, um. And just wanted to talk through, like, it's been on my mind and thinking through like what that decision affects. And so I was just wondering your thoughts on on closing everything down for for snow days, how you guys feel about that?
No.
You know? Uh, so after drawing it out, I'm I'm there and it's like you don't really realize it until you start looking at. I mean, majority of our departments have to work anyway in some capacity, whether it's background, support. Um, and then the others are elected, serving the public, so, um. Also learning more about the the courts and the jury trials. And statutorily, the list doesn't include weather, like when they have trials, we don't want people to show up and the courthouse be locked. So I'm on that wavelength, but I wanted to have that conversation, so.
Yeah.
But we can talk, we can talk through it of that way. H R knows how to answer questions and department heads know, you know, that they need to.
Well, then how will it work? I mean. Just saying we're not going to do it like we did before, I mean.
So we won't. So we won't close down. It'll be at the discretion of. I mean, because so Sheriff EMS, Roden Bridge, Solidways, like. Don't close down. H R, I T, maintenance, our background, support, they like when we're running, we're running. They're cleaning senior village, you know. Senior village can't. They're taking care of people.
I'd say all our department heads that we administer are, we're open, the courthouse will be open, and on the elected, that's up to them, but. You know, you'd example, I don't know what the sheriff's going to do. Or EMS is going to do, but they're going to be operating anyway, but they may choose not to have their administrative folks come in or something. I mean, that's.
That's their call, yeah, their call.
So to me, it's, uh. We're open, we serve the public and. Department, elected department heads want to do something differently, that's on them.
Okay.
So may I?
Yeah.
So when we're checking the roads and they're horrible, everything's drifted. Do we still kind of go through the same process and unless gets a hold of you or?
Well, so that what we're talking about of like, we won't, we're not going to close, close now.
Alright. Alright. But do you want to know how bad the roads are? Or are you concerned about that?
I mean, I think if it's so if that's like, if you guys would want to send an email or something to department heads. For them to make those decisions, but as far as how to staff their office, but as far as serving the public, we'll be open. Like, we won't close.
So we we normally, you know, uh, Bridge puts out. Kind of, we try to put out what the roads are like.
Right.
You know, updates and stuff like that, so. Okay, that's what.
No, it's, how do you put that out?
On Facebook, on our Facebook page, and we can actually, you know, think, I'll talk to us to the county. Because does it show up on the county website?
I don't know.
I don't remember. Look, I'll talk to.
So so I saw the closings like last night on social media. Um, and so that was one of the things like typically would we have closed? Because we couldn't because we have things to do. So it just doesn't feel right, like would the the courts have things to do, you know, like. I we shouldn't inhibit other people.
No, I know, like three seventy seven will call and talk to me, and I will talk to them. They're the ones that really.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's those are some differences.
Right, so, uh. Lot of department heads would need to, if they're going to close, they need to contact, put it on Facebook or they need to. Put the. Being the elected.
Electives.
So only, so all other department heads.
They're all working anyway.
Also, it's like we found in the past, right? It's like we can create a policy, so the county's not going to shut down for weather incrimination, like. Each department can staff accordingly. And make those decisions, um, and then if someone were to choose to do something outside of that. They have to figure, you know, it's, they have to figure out how to. I don't think they will. I think they'll go, I think electeds will do what. What the county is doing.
Yeah, I do minimal staffing, they might, because it'll be less.
And every department's going to be different, like. Based on what their needs are, so. Okay. Thank you. Uh, county councillor updates.
Yeah.
Um, we filed a motion for, uh. Judgment on the pleadings in the tax sale hearing is January twenty second. And at that that day, we'll probably, uh, set the date for the tax sale. Which I still expect to be in February.
How many properties are still on there? That's alright, don't need to look it up, it's just.
Yeah. I I can look real quick, if, uh. Thirty two. But. There were sixty seven. Originally, and thirty five are.
It's good.
Yeah.
Hey. Thank you. Uh, any need for any more executive sessions?
I would like to add one, but we can go ahead and do that after, and it'll be very short.
Okay. Uh, approval of expenses. Do I have a motion to approve this week's expenses?
So, second.
Okay, it's been moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I pass this three to zero, public comment.
Hi, that's me, yeah, okay. I'm sorry about my voice.
No, you're fine.
Um, I'm a married seller, so I'm not township, and we got our email from, um, Pat Henderson, that, um, he threw out our. Uh, names that we collected informing us that we didn't fill out the petition correctly. And I just want to be made to all of you guys that we filled it out the way Michelle Phillips told us to fill it out. She told us to do the names and then just underneath there, write. What the problems were, you know, and, you know, very vaguely, and I thought she did not tell us. All what to do, that what you told us to do in that email. And, um, so it's not, we feel like that this is not right because we did what she told us to do. And we went out and got all these names, it took a lot of time and effort to do that. And most of the time, every one of them has been following this on Facebook and everything. Um, so we're sort of really upset because now, you know, do we go hire a lawyer to write this out for us the correct way? Is there, I mean, because everybody knew what it's on there and we did what we were told to do by Michelle Phillips. If that, if that was wrong, then she doesn't know what she's doing up there and told us that. And now we wasted all that time after you sent out those emails.
I I can't speak to what happened in a meeting with someone else that I I wasn't there for, but the statutes. I know she gave you the statutes, and statutes make clear that you're supposed to get the question vetted. Prior to getting the signatures. And that that wasn't done.
No.
And.
It wasn't done, because they weren't told.
Yeah.
We get, she gave us those papers and told us to fill out.
As I, I had not discussed this with the commission, so they don't know what had happened, but there had been a, I believe on Thursday of last week. A recall petition submitted. Uh regarding the treasurer walnut township, and by statute, then the uh. I am to review that. Uh to determine the. Whether or not all the legal requirements have been met, and I got that out on Friday. Uh five business days, I think, is what's in the statute, but I wanted to get it out quickly.
Right, she told it, she told us three.
Should we just ask her to come down? Yep, I emailed her, but I don't know if she's checking her email.
Well, I I don't know that there's really anything for for you all to do. Um other than to be aware of the situation that's going on. As I mentioned in the letter, I would be happy to, I can't write it for you. Um I can't give you advice, but I can dialogue with you about what to put in there, so we we could talk about it some and you'd have to draft it, but I. Uh we could. I I think it's fixable.
It's fixable, but yeah, but yet we have to go out and go to all those people, we have way over enough names to cover this.
What's the required number?
She told us ninety-some, eighty, eighty-seven and ninety-some, we got a hundred and fourteen. So, because she said someone might not clear, because we asked for the um. Walnut Township registered voter list three times and we never got it either. Um so we just went out and started knocking on doors, and I said I at least want a hundred, and then people was calling us wanting to sign it too. So our total number is a hundred and fourteen, well, you know, it takes a lot of time and effort to go. To get a hundred and fourteen more names, the same ones, but they're gonna ask why and and all this, all because we wasn't told. How to fill this out properly, we don't know what, you know, you could just, we could do what you just said, and can we attach it to our same list? Why do, so why do we have to go back to seven fourteen people when we was just doing, we wasn't told correctly? It just seems like everything that's going against Walnut Township, we're going to hell in a handbasket. Because every time we try to do something, there's another issue that comes up.
Well, the statute sets out the procedure to be followed.
And so why didn't she tell us that?
Well, you you'd have to take that up with her.
Well, then that's why I want to talk to her.
We really don't treat it as.
Okay.
I mean, this, I mean, this is really not our role, I mean, the role is really, this is between them and Michelle, I mean, figure it out, I mean, that's what you have to go through.
Yeah, I just thought.
Some instructions, at least on what to put on there.
So, so what was done incorrectly?
Well. Essentially, the question was too vague, the uh. They have to put on there for the people to sign the 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 reasons for the justification for. The recall, and you can't just do a recall because we want somebody else, there has, there are statutory bases for. Recall, and they have to include a factual statement not to exceed two hundred words to describe what. Factually, the person did that. Makes them worthy of recall.
Factually, him not doing his job duties and violating all the open. Wrote a check for forty grand and only used one signature, would that be a fact?
That would be a fact.
But everybody, everybody knew that, because they're all been following, I think, I know.
Well.
But, okay, but he still wasn't following the Open Book Act, I mean, we had two reasons why. And that should have covered everything that it don't.
But you you didn't include factual statements, so it's one thing to say there is a violation of the Open Meetings Act, it's another to say. That in September, well, that's a conclusion, I guess.
So you need.
September, two members of the board met at a place other than the. Regular meeting spot, spot without giving notice and not on a regular meeting date and discussed affairs of the. The township, that would be a factual statement, and this didn't include factual statements.
So it lacked description.
It lacked specification.
If we were told that, we would have done that. And now we have to go back and redo all the hat, all the footsteps, all knocking on the doors. And everything, because we wasn't told the have the right way to fill out the petition.
Well, but the people that are signing that are, you know, theoretically, they read it and they have to know what the.
And they read that part, but they all knew about it, because they've all been following it on township, on the township page. Because they all, every single one of them, I know, ask about that thirty thousand dollar check.
You know, I also pointed out in that letter, you have the right to appeal my decision, have the matter heard by a district judge by filing a mandamus action in the district court within thirty days. So you're you're free to do that as well if you disagree with the the reasoning, but.
If you would have told us how to fill that out properly, so we fill it out, now you told us to fill it out.
Okay, I just, so for me, I kind of want to understand it, because like you're you're.
It feels like Walnut Township again in here, I mean, I'm, I understand your problem. I think this is a problem you guys need to go figure out, it's not a county.
We've been trying to figure it out, but every time we hit a rock wall, because somebody brings up stuff that we're not doing correctly.
Okay, well, now's the time to sit down and listen.
May I join your conversation, at least for learning afterwards? I just, because I field those questions too, and I never have answers, so it's like me of like, not. Not a thing, I'm just literally learning to understand it better and to to understand, because like. To Pat's example of of the more specific on September, whatever these two people met, like in my brain is like. I could say that, but how do I prove that? Like, how do you, how do you prove that Eric and I met this time when it's kind of accusation, right? No, I'm just trying to learn.
It is accusations, and there isn't really a trial that, the trial, if you will, is determined by the voters. The voters decide whether or not those facts are are true or not true.
Okay, so the facts on the petition, the folks are signing their name. Validating that these facts are true based on what is said in the meetings or reported in the meetings or.
I guess you could look at it that way, yeah.
Okay.
I would say in words like, we uh agree to have a judgment by the voters of these facts, I mean, the way I would interpret that, but. Again, not.
Yeah, I've just.
Yeah.
We've never been down this road or through this, so I'm just trying to understand them.
So we sit down and they made a list, it's all the stuff that um was not done correctly. So if we bring that to you, you'll go over it?
I will go over it with you. I I I won't write your factual statement for you, I can't do that.
Are you gonna tell us if it's right or wrong, if it's gonna be wrong again?
Under the statute, that's supposed to be vetted before you circulate it, and so, yes. I I would definitely.
He looks.
I would definitely give you that advice before.
And what, does it have to be drafted on? I'm sure that's gonna make a difference too, a petition paper or what?
Yeah, that's one of the problems with that form, is it really isn't big enough to put in a factual statement, and we'll we'll be able to.
They don't even tell you to do what you just said, and she didn't even tell us to do what you said we had to do.
The the form's not perfect, for sure, I I'm sure we can, we can get it the. We can get it on a form that works, and then I think you would just photocopy that one page instead of uh. In- instead of handwriting it out. I I think fourteen times, I think you have fourteen pages.
We do.
So. Yeah, so it would be easier to do it that way.
So when can you meet with with us to to do this?
Do you have uh those notes prepared yet?
I don't have them with me, they're with Gary, Gary was busy with township stuff today.
Okay, well.
It's snowy now.
Uh if you want to do it after this meeting, we could do it then, or.
I don't have notes with me.
If you want to do it late this afternoon?
Um.
I could do it tomorrow, because we, right, we were supposed to have a meeting, we're not having a meeting, so I've got time tomorrow morning.
Okay.
I've got time tomorrow, pretty much anytime.
Yeah, let's just do it tomorrow, then I'll go down to Gary and eat the min- minutes and, or Gary could do that with me, yeah, Gary can come too.
The morning would be best for me.
Tomorrow morning, okay.
What time?
Um say eleven? Call him right now and see.
Yeah, should we just meet right here?
Sure.
Can I call him and see if that's good for him?
Sure.
So you'll meet on this topic tomorrow?
Hey, it's Mary Jane, hey, um can we come up um tomorrow with that paper that you made of all the. You know, all the problems and stuff.
Yeah, no.
He's gonna help us um sort of form it up, but he, you know, can't help us, help us, but. He could look at all this stuff we did and get it on the correct form, can you come up, can you meet with me tomorrow at eleven? Okay, up here in the county commissioner's room tomorrow at eleven. Mm-hmm, okay, okay.
Okay, that sounds great.
Meetings as factual statements, like.
Art of the meetings.
I know.
Better to reference things that happen in the meetings, so there's proof versus.
Well, yeah, that's, that's up to the people, it was like.
Yes, tomorrow at eleven is fine.
Okay, we'll be right here.
And then can you get some more of the the correct petitions or whatever that we need the copies of, like, you know?
Yeah.
At least fourteen. But no, the signature ones, we have to go get the re-signature ones.
Okay, okay, that's fine too, let's go.
Thank you, Casey, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
You guys need me for anything?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was gonna say, when they came in for questions, I gave them the information on petition. I gave them the information on the statutes, where to find them, and I told them to read them. I, we even made comment about having the petition checked, because I know when people run your office, it does not have to be checked. But any other petition should be checked by either the county council or the county attorney. I made comment to them, I said, just read your statutes and make sure that things are being done correctly. It's not the fact, I know, that's all on me. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we need a lovely comment. Okay, C one, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I was gonna do the.
Oh, I'm sorry about that, thank you. Oops, yeah, sorry.
I'll move with the board of county commissioners, recess and executive session. Uh one fifteen uh P M for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. At the law bank, K S A seventy-five dash four three one nine B two, and the purpose of the closed session. Is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion, that the board come out of executive session in ten minutes in the commission room. Courthouse basement, most present will be the three commissioners and Pat Henderson. Thank you.
Hey, it's been moved in second and all those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. We're heading into executive session.
That's not, I mean, that's. Political.
Um so we are back in open session and look for a motion to adjourn.
So move, second.
Okay, moved in second and all those in favors say aye, aye, passes three to zero.